That's the final conclusion.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the rule of the British Union, all nation under God, in the name of the Lord. The clear and just as far.
Motion.
Sebo.
Yes.
Osborne. Bender.
Here.
Walker.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Don't move. You're like a fine agenda. It's like.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the, uh, the six minutes.
I'm gonna approve it, but I have a question that needs to be in the minutes. So the question would be.
Well, you make the motion.
Yes.
Okay. Let's make it so. Okay.
In fact, being, uh, in the mayor and council discussion last meeting, I asked, uh, the question and asked for, uh, all that should be done and asked to see if we've worked on that. Uh, you have few of minutes. Those minutes last time. You don't remember? Are you?
In the minutes, they'll say hasn't, and then, and then they'll have that sentence. And I didn't have any audio.
No, I know, but I just wanna make sure the record is like what I asked.
Yes.
Okay, so we have the, uh, uh, motion on the table, approve the minutes. And a second, uh, that's a walk call.
Sebo.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Bender.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the consent to do.
I might motion approve the consent to do. Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the resolution, can we?
Make a motion after the resolution.
Oh, second.
That's a walk call.
Sebo.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Bender.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
Well, as we, uh, talked about the last meeting, we've got this issue with the, uh, traffic light pole applying drag. And so, um, we're making a request to, um, approve the replacement of that traffic light pole in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and four dollars.
Would that get by somebody?
Not the world.
It is just cruel. Well, I know somebody that worked on the truck stop and, and actually I mentioned that he's actually on a crew and, um, he said, "It's been that way for quite a while." And that's the might have hit it. I'm gonna motion to, um, approve that part of the test.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Um, I, I just wanted to say though, Chris had said, uh, that it was just wear and tear as far as you could tell, so. Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mark?
Question is, what's, what's the wear and tear and where, where's it broke at? What's, and where's the cracks at or whatever in it?
Well, could the wear and tear be the wind action?
The wind action, but what part of the pole is bad? What part of the pole is bad? It's a two-piece pole?
Chris, two-piece pole, the part, the arm that holds the lights.
Why aren't we just replacing the arm, the light arm?
Uh, it's not compatible.
What do you mean it's not compatible?
That's what they're telling me.
They make them all over the country, they're special wear fab. Uh, in fact, the same lights were used on University Avenue and they just took the KNW, just took a ton of them down.
Well, give me a minute to fix it.
Well, okay, did, did you contact KNW?
No, I, the City of Waterloo handles it.
So I need to replace the arm bit.
We're contracted with the City of Waterloo, that was the recommendation.
Yeah. Yeah, it is contracted with the City of Waterloo, so, uh, we're trusting them. So, we've got, um, some discussion, um, if we wanna do signage, let's say. I know we've discussed it before, uh, and it seemed to be, um, Mayor Foss was the one who brought us some proposals in the past. Uh, it didn't go anywhere because we couldn't agree on what sort of signage we wanted. You know, some, some people are in favor of electronic signs, uh, and some aren't. I'm, I'm sort of ambivalent on electronic signs, but, uh, and how many of where, and so we got bogged down, uh, in that whole discussion. I guess I'm wondering, is the council interested in getting bogged down again in that discussion? It's worthwhile, I believe, but.
My, my question first I want is, uh, to know style, cost, and then who else is gonna participate in buying this? I know we had a little letter from Donna saying different events, would, would this project be funded by the police, fire, and the city, or this district would be a city investment? And, uh, like you said, Mayor, and where would they, where would it be? I know I've had some information on this in the last few days. Weather can play a big part in affecting these things too. The costly to repair. And then the second thing would be what style, if the council agreed on a choice to, um, put a sign up and where. I, I mean, I can, I'm kinda caught between the two there. I mean, I'm, some ways I'm for it, some ways I'm against it. Uh, you, you.
Against, uh, the electronic.
Yeah. I think if we were gonna, I think there'd be a lot of studying, maybe done like, maybe not a traffic light pole, but where's the best spot, if any, what style? I know you helped out when I was on the board down there at the, uh, Deerwood thing, which was kinda nice. And if we had, if we could come up with something that we'd agree on. I'm not in agreement with this, just going out and saying we're gonna buy it, we're gonna, and then there's the, uh, installation cost. There's kind of an expense behind it, you really have to give some research, and I haven't done a lot of research yet, but I think we, I honestly myself, I think we could spend our money more prudently on things that we have pending in the city than going on, putting up new signs, two signs, three signs.
Well, I don't think that was, we're spending a lot of money right now, just from the long, but number two, I think we oughta possibly tie it in the Eagle's Landing, you know, because you know we're gonna be doing something out there, so.
That was my thought too.
Yeah, um, well, so, I don't know, I don't even know how we, we move forward on it.
It's kinda the same place we started, we made it there last time, we talked about it. We talked about electric sign, we talked about like what we have down there. We talked about putting a vertical sign up, Donna said, "Welcome to Evansville," Evansville running up and down, uh, kinda match the Deerwood sign. Then we got bogged down on how many signs we put up, how, you know, every street coming in to Evansville, does it need one, or just the highways? Well, putting one out here is not gonna cover the traffic on the interstate, so that's where we got bogged down and kinda gave up on it.
Yeah, we did. Well, let me, uh, see if I can get a consensus here. Is anybody in favor of electronic sign?
I'm not, you know. I am, if it was gonna go, I mean. Well.
I would say electronic.
I would say I'm not at the moment, I guess.
What do you mean, did we start purchasing now or getting?
Yeah, just, um, for the, for the electronic sign.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have to find somebody that knows what it's called.
My, my feel on that is that the electronic would cost more maintenance and upkeep than you'd be drawing money out of more than, than you want, I guess.
I was told this fellow down here, uh, Truck Outfitters paid five or six thousand for that little one up there on the pole, and I found that a little ridiculous when I went and looked at it and spent five, six thousand dollars for that.
Yeah, I think they're fairly expensive and the thought is, you know, Donna, um, kinda brought the whole discussion up, um, that is part of the rag bribe discussion. Uh, I think she was thinking about, you know, the messaging, and in fact, uh, didn't Kent Smack, when he was fire chief, push hard for a, do you remember that, Mike, uh, for electronic sign?
That doesn't ring a bell to me. That doesn't ring a bell right off hand.
Yeah, there, there was some real.
If you have a price for anything.
Interest in that.
I think probably if we're thinking about reflecting sign or like electronic sign, um, I think Mark was in the business for years. He could probably come pretty close telling you what for years, kinda called you to run one of them, and they keep one up. I get Kent Smack for it, Kent Smack's price originally down there, and you were looking at single sided one of your, it was a ten grand, one to be big enough. If you look at Waterloo schools, the little ones they have in front of the school, that little bitty message you put up there, when in order to catch traffic, you gotta keep the same matches up for a certain amount of time, where it's kinda blink, like every seven seconds in order to catch traffic. The Waterloo schools for the moment, they're ten, ten grand a piece that they put up, that's the installation and all. Now, if you can do like Chad did out here, I put his up about two years ago, two hundred grand. Is what Chad signed us up here, electronic.
Well, we should be good for.
I respect the budget, I didn't know. Straight on, honest with you, and the cost, uh, I did Waterloo Greyhound Park for years, and every time there's a lightning strike within a half mile, it blew the electronics out of it, we had two twenty-foot ground rods in it.
Wow.
Yeah. There's a lot of, a lot of, it's because basically it's computer charge and you get, it's not a direct lightning strike, static electricity is what, it's in the air and it'll blow the, blow the computer currents out of it.
Maybe travel could be.
Thank you, Mark.
You can help.
It's just the, there's a lot of money in, in the maintaining of them, uh, but then again, Deerwood Park, it's fine setting threat, but it's not like that you need, if you're gonna put a sign up, you need to do like, yeah, go to some of these towns, put them up, you know Cedar Rapids, you go into Cedar Rapids, it's eye catcher, Cedar Falls is eye catcher, Waterloo's on their flagpole, nobody notices it, you know?
Well, I don't know.
I need to know they have one.
Yeah.
Who?
Waterloo.
Waterloo, yeah, they got them all by their flag, but every, they're all coming sixty-three and everything coming in town over here on, you gotta look for it.
Oh, up in the air when you're driving down the road.
Nobody even knows.
I read them all the time.
Their basic concrete, uh.
Cedar Falls, a little well from something.
Coming in, coming in town, Cedar Falls, had a nice one for years coming in off of.
Waverly too, Waverly has.
Waverly, there's, there's, there's some, but they, you gotta have colors, eye catchers, things designed like that. You know, this one out on the corner says, "That's down the corner." It's probably the cheapest one you got, what have you got, five hundred dollars invested in it? And it stands out, it's plain jane, but at least you know where Evansville's at. Well, one other conversation was about putting that vertical sign in, the matching Deerwood sign, was that they would make like a small, we'll say sixty-foot circle with small evergreens in it, and this sign in the center, which would be a small blend of what Cedar Rapids is using, uh, what Cedar Falls is using. Uh, the, that middle area itself would draw the attention and the sign would be in the middle of it, that was one of the discussions. Actually, about the only discussion there really was, other than where do we put them and how many, and nobody could agree.
Well, it seemed like, I, I remember, um, the ones that I sort of favored was just a real simple vertical sign, like Alish Talumba or something, and it just sounded like a Roman's bell.
You and I discussed the vertical, 'cause you and I put up the one for Deerwood.
Yeah.
And, uh, we've talked about putting a vertical and we thought, I think, we presented that plan and it drew about as much attention as it did tonight. I think it's a good thought, uh, but I, I think we need to do a little research, decide on, like, what are we looking for with a plan, and what would be a preliminary cost, then bring it back and discuss it if we really want to get into that kinda stuff, but I think you'll all be shocked if you check, it's very pricey, very pricey. But if the council would decide that they think we need one somewhere, I don't think in no way do we need two, three of them around the town. But we would have to decide the travel, which would suit the best for it, and, uh, decide if we wanna go with a nice one, one spot and go there, and then who's gonna, we bring ideas to the table, and then who's gonna support and fund it? Is the chamber gonna support with their budget, if they have any? Police, fire, 'cause they're probably gonna wanna put activities on from time to time? No? No, okay.
Uh, and, and also no.
Well, then, I guess you could probably guess, no, pretty good, if nobody wants to participate, but. I was having a question this quarter to see if anybody is really interested, no sense in doing a bunch of labor work, bothering a bunch of people for prices, and not a soul sitting on the council that's interested.
You know, back in the day when this sign was put up, it was probably Roman, that was our main entrance.
Yeah.
Now, is it River Forest Road, is it, uh, Evansville Drive?
Or is it McCoy, coming off the interstate?
Yeah.
I really think, uh, what Charlie said, Eagles are planned out there, I mean, that would be, that area would be really a hotspot, traffic areas, we were gonna have one, we have it out there in that location, because you get tons of people there daily versus anywhere else in the town.
It would still work out of state.
Right.
They need some type of signage out there when they get done with Eagles Landing, to, uh, pay tribute to the city.
Yeah, you know, one, uh, a sign that's similar to Cedar Rapids or Way of the Lake or Cedar Falls, a real sort of artistic sign would work out there, that'd be a good place for it, but, so, where do, where do we go with it? Do we deep six it, or put it into a study?
Well, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on the sign, no.
But they're about thirty years old, you're pretty astounded, and you like it, take a picture of it.
Yeah. And bring them back for review. Bring some pictures in if you took shots some summer, and then, uh, I mean, I'd be willing to do a little research, because it's something that's come back and eat it, or just see what other communities are signing around, aren't what they cost, uh, or get a hold of some people that are in the business and give us a thing of, but, you know, first of all, you gotta have some kind of design itself, this problem's gonna not get a place. So that would be the key thing, and I thought you'd be real good if it was masonry work.
Yeah, I mean, I like brick signs, but I was trying to steer away from that.
I knew that, that's why. If you're helping that, it's definitely. Thank you, one last recommendation, I think the water tower's the best thing we have and it's time to advertise with. When that water tower's put up, they did, to try to sell the water tower, they put a thing out there for design and they were gonna put the design on the water tower. Well, it never happened, it just got plain old Evansville on it. But there's some water towers around all over that have some real artistic and coming into town, especially out where you're talking, uh, that Eagles Landing or whatever, uh, would be tremendous if, when that water tower's gonna come up with, what, five years, you can probably repaint, to get a great design from, not a local competition thing like Waterloo's doing, their fab, get a, Elman or somebody, a design agency, uh.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's a good point, it's there, it's, it's a light, uh, essentially.
Yeah, that's right, it's close to it.
Yeah. All right, well, I guess we can give it a thought, I guess if you see on it, and interest.
I think of a picture of a water tower.
If you're out doing research.
I feel like I'm on a water tower, you know, I'm not gonna run all over the country, I'm gonna go on a cold perimeter.
There's a nice one on Interstate eighty, it's a smiley face. Just before you get into, uh, Grand Island, Nebraska, there's a one that's painted like a hot air balloon.
A water tower?
Yeah. Another one, in South Carolina, they got one that's, uh, looks like a peach. So you, what's that? You'll notice when you go out and look at water towers, the neat part about living in Iowa, most small towns name their water tower after their town. You ever notice that?
I was talking about that one. I thought it was just a corner. Um, all right, so we're, we're gonna study that one. Public discussion, anybody out there have any comments? Um, Mayor Council reports, um, I don't have anything except that, uh, uh, the county did approve, uh, deeding that parcel, case or parcel to over to us, so it's just a formality now, uh, I got an email today that, uh, they'll send us the deed, and if the council approves it, I'll sign it and we're good to go, so.
I did wanna ask you one, one question, I didn't hear anything else about it, what about that mower deck? The mower deck that was behind the waste water facility? Are we gonna sell that, or the mower deck?
Thank you.
That was up behind the waste water plant?
Yeah. I don't know.
It disappeared.
We don't.
You had it, Chris?
It didn't disappear.
Or is it?
Same place you guys saw it when you were last up there.
Really? Instead of the day we were there? That's just been put back.
Uh, it never got moved.
Do you know what it's for, Chris?
That they used to use it to mow down there, but I was gonna put it on the, one of the things listed to sell, see if we get any lights on it.
Is it for that tractor down there?
Yeah. But yeah, it hasn't moved in two years.
So you, what, it's for a scrap or what?
No, it's, I mean, I think we paid probably six, seven thousand for it. It just doesn't do a very good job and, uh, we can do it quicker with the zero terms, so.
Yeah, well, maybe we get it pulled out of there and.
It's sitting on a concrete slab, it's.
Yeah. Do we have other stuff to sell?
Yeah, I got a list that I'm getting together.
Uh, well, we could end up with all the Hillman stuff, uh, we got that order approved, so, I guess that maybe is a discussion for another day on what we wanna do with that. I'm reluctant to have our crews deal with it. Yeah, I don't know if you're all familiar with all the.
This the one on River Road?
Yeah.
I, I'm not, I haven't driven down there recently, but.
Well, you can see it from the highway, it's like, I don't know, half a dozen jet skis and stuff, and so, w- we're authorized by the court to, uh, get rid of them, but I don't think that we want Chris and his crew haul that stuff out of there, do we?
Well, you gotta make a choice what you're gonna do, either you're gonna have it hauled out, pay money, or have them do it on city time, or leave it sit, it's three options. If you have somebody come in and clean it up, I don't know what, there's another thing, what would we pay to have somebody clean it up and haul it off versus, I mean, our city crew, if you clean it up and then put it back into its taxes of property?
Yeah. Except property isn't worth much, but.
Are you, are we legally, um, supposed to like hold the property, if you remove it off the property, are you supposed to hold it for twenty-four hours or something like that? Do you have to keep it somewhere, keep it up?
No, we don't at this point, we can just remove it and.
And then what, take it to?
Well, it's gonna be expensive for the city too.
The garage, and then there's the issues of title, uh, problems. I was kinda wondering if we could contact, uh, and I asked Brian to check with our attorney on this, uh, and I'll, I'll let you all know when we find out if there was some salvage company that would take it for what it was worth, because I can't see invested our money on it. But it, it's, it's our baby now.
The problem is with the fiberglass boats, you just gotta take those to the dump 'cause most scrappers want them, 'cause they're just, they're fiberglass.
Yeah.
And even if there's a motor in them, it's not worth, uh, disposal cost.
No, but maybe the trailer it's set in a.
Yeah.
You know, or, I don't know, but those jet skis or any of that other, uh, stuff that's there, but, uh, so, we'll, we'll keep you informed.
Would it be something that you could maybe hire somebody to just come and say, you know, like post it and say, "Okay, this is going up for auction," even though it's not really worth anything, but, like, some people who might own jet skis will come in and say, "Okay, I'll take that," they could take every, you know, like, take the jet ski and the trailer, not just the trailer, you know what I mean? So you could kind of make a stipulation like that and just hold it, and then see if you can get any money out of it, and that's what it costs. I don't know.
Possibly, I, I wanted to get a clarification on, uh, our legal obligations or rights, one or the other, and then we'll try to move forward, but, uh, I don't know, is there a consensus here on the council that we probably don't want our street department doing that stuff?
Well, the way I'm looking at it is, we, we spent all this Florida money, go on the court, we spent all of the building inspection time going down there for months and months, and then I'm getting a consensus here, we wanna just kinda walk away from it. I mean, our disposition should redo something in that result.
No, not walk away from it, but look for alternatives, have somebody else do it.
I'm hearing, you could probably have one scrap person come out and look at it and make, give you a really quick census, whether there's anything that's, uh, with, taken in order to some pay, uh, I know, um, we have a contractor here in Evansville that tears down buildings and stuff, but he keeps all the scrap out of it and labors about half them, you know? There's gotta be other people, like, he's not interested, but there's gotta be other people, um, like for us, when you were talking about taking a motor out of a jet ski, uh, grabbing scrap right across the street, it would run you thirty bucks. You handle that when you're gonna haul the rest of it out, so it's a contractor.
Yeah. Well, so I'll, I'll, uh, work with Brian on that and see if we can get some resolution that won't cost us any money, any more money.
It seemed to me like when we cleaned that one up, up at a truck stop, uh, that was when Chad was here, seemed like we went and got that and we hauled it out and sold it.
Yeah, I'm pretty reluctant to do that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think that's how we got rid of that one.
Yeah. Yeah.
There was many parts involved in it and. Well, then another question, Dean, maybe, what if we find out that we can't do nothing but have to get involved and haul the way and clean it up because we've done a proceeding on it? Are we gonna make the decision then that we are gonna have to spend money to haul it off and clean it up? Oh, absolutely. I mean, I just wanna know. No, no, it's gotta be cleaned up, we just, we got a little bit of time to, to look at four options, you know, and, uh, you pointed out the three, the other one is, give the contractor to take a look at it, so we got four options, but no, it's got to go, even if our guys have to do it.
I'll keep you informed. Um, anything else?
I had some, just a little bit of info from a lot of work, since they're liaison, could I share it? Should I share it?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, well, I, I just thought it was just some pieces I could probably just share in that they have three candidates that they're interviewing for a clerk position. They've agreed there. And they said today they would probably make that decision. Okay, I didn't talk to them today, and they just.
What position now, more, for what now?
They're filling a position for, um.
A water.
Clerk position.
A water clerk.
In the water works. Yep, and then this position will take over Sandy's role when she retires in twenty twenty-two. And then, All Paid, which is the company that Upfront Heights uses for, has been using for some time, which is gonna allow the residents to pay their water bill online, um, that will be put in place too, once the new clerk comes in on board and then sent out to help both your orientation. And that was about it. So just a couple of pieces that they shared.
Yeah, you know, when that clerk position, they're starting.
I think they'll start in a cou- within a couple of weeks, I wasn't sure, they said there was one, I think that, there's two that maybe needed a couple weeks and one that can start right away, you know? Yeah, I don't know, it'd be within a couple of weeks, that's what they'd be starting.
Well, isn't Char's job open?
It is Char's job.
Yeah, so that one would be one they probably start right away.
Well, it's just the availability of a person they hired.
That's, that's who they are, start right away.
Yeah.
And they'll eventually take over for.
And they'll eventually take over for Sandy. Yep, that's it.
Okay, well, um, anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, so hey.
We're adjourned.